Good evening, folks. At this time, we'll call the August the 7th, 2012 meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners to order, and I'll lead us in our invocation this evening. Our Lord, we thank you so much for the opportunity to serve you and to serve your people. We express and confess to you our lack of wisdom and understanding. We admit our human shortcomings. We ask you to have mercy on us, and you would give us wisdom where we lack it and give us understanding where you see fit. Pray your blessing on this county. We pray for those members of our community, indeed all across our nation, who serve in wars on the other side of the world. We pray that you would be with them, and you would protect them, you would build a hedge around them. For those who command them, that you would give them wisdom, and they would be bold and decisive. And you would protect those young men and women, that you would bring them home safely. Pray there'd be peace in these areas, where the people could go peacefully about their lives, and they could prosper. And we pray you would bless our county, you would bless this board, you would bless everyone that works for the county, everyone who lives in this county. And we ask it in the name of our Lord. Amen. Join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of our country. Thank you, Mr. Robertson, for jump-starting me on the Pledge of Allegiance. I had a brain lock there.[138.88][138.88](Laughter). Were any adjustments of the agenda coming from the staff this evening, Mr. Smith?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to remove both items from the closed-session agenda.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
Or are there any adjustments of the agenda from any member of the board this evening? Hearing none, the floor is open for a motion for adoption of this agenda as containing the amendments offered by Mr. Smith. All right. Motion for adoption of this agenda comes from Commissioner Mitchell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have no presentations of special recognitions and awards this evening. I tell you, reconsideration. Mr. Robertson, are you prepared to make that presentation at this time?
Certainly. Proclamation.
Proclamation, yes, sir.
Excuse me.
I'd like to offer before the board a special recognition of Lieutenant Colonel Paul Michael. At this time, we would like to recognize North Carolina Air National Guard Lieutenant Colonel Paul Michael, who was killed last month while piloting a cargo plane on a mission in South Dakota to fight wildfires. Michael was a resident of Mooresville. He had previously been deployed to Afghanistan and Iraq. Our heartfelt sympathy and condolences are extended to the family of this heroic and honorable young man.
If we could, at this time, I'd ask for just a brief moment. We just bow our head in a moment of silence, and remember his family is your heart moves Amen. Okay. This evening, we have an appointment for the board, Mr. Jerry Carr. I did not see Mr. Carr in the audience. Is he here? Okay. We'll move down. If he shows up in a little bit, we'll adjust the agenda. We have no public hearings this evening, so we'll move to administrative matters, and at this point, I'll turn it over to our county manager, Mr. Smith.
Thank you. The first item, A, which is memo number two, is a request for acceptance of the annual tax settlement and issuance of the 2012 tax orders for the tax collector and sheriff. Our tax collector, Bill Furchess, is going to make that presentation.
Good evening. I sent out a couple of little flyers for you here the other day. It gives you some tax rates, and I think you got something tonight that shows you where our tax collectors go. These are sort of the questions that people ask us all the time, and it gives you something you use as a resource. As you know, we have the 20th lowest tax rate in the state of North Carolina, and it's a lot less expensive to live in Iredell County than it is in most other counties. My purpose tonight here is requirement of law to have to give an annual settlement of the preceding fiscal year to the governing board before being charged with taxes for the current fiscal year. The board will also issue orders to the tax collector and the sheriff to collect taxes for the coming year. 2011 tax year, the year ended June 30th, 2012, it was a relatively tough year. It's been that way for about four years now. We, our taxes are up quite a bit compared to last year, but in fact, we've hit 98,000, excuse me, 98,488,000 in tax levy, and we collected 95,303,000. One, a couple of things that are interesting in the levy itself is that motor vehicles are up for the first time since 2008. They've been going down every year, and they've gone up. They went up 11.1 percent this past year. They're now 6.35 million, whereas in 2008, they were 6.6 million. You'll notice that in the, where the deductions for releases, that's unusually high because this was a reval year, and a lot of that is commercial property, those type things. We always expect that in a reval year. We still have $3 million outstanding in taxes for the year. Our collection rate for all property was 96.77. That approximates what we did last year, 96.81. If you exclude motor vehicles, it's 97.30. For motor vehicles, we did 88.96. We spent an extremely, a large amount of time on motor vehicles this year, and managed to get it up 1.47 percent. It was very disappointing. We still have the same problem. 60 percent of the people pay their taxes on time for motor vehicles. Rest of them do not. On our delinquent collections, we're still doing fairly well. We've collected 2.3 million. Our total delinquent taxes outstanding, this is the nine years past the current year, are $4 million. Now, you have to remember, the original levy on that is 665 million. We've also, we also collected $311,000 in 2012 taxes during the 2011 fiscal year. If you turn the page to the numbers, this year, we collected $5,498,000 more than we did the previous year, which is up 6.1 percent. We collected $506,000 more than was budgeted. I was very disappointed in this. That's 100.5 percent of the budget. However, it shows you that we're getting very close on our budgeting, and it says a lot about our accessories, giving you a very, giving a very good number to the manager and finance officer. Our eight-year cumulative total, we are $13.9 million over budgeted revenues. Our eight-year cumulative delinquent collections are a little over $16 million. If you'll notice, our collections for all jurisdictions over the past eight years, and I use eight years because I've been back with the county for eight years, has gone up from 94 million to 157 million, which is an increase of two-thirds, 66 percent. Tax collection actions we have taken, some things that stand out here, we blocked 22,500 motor vehicle taxes. And what that means is those people have to either call and get instructions on how they can pay the taxes online, or they have to come in and pay it. Well, that averages 90 people a day that we have to spend extra time on. You'll notice that the third item here is motor vehicle third notices. We tried something this year we had not done in the past. We sent out a third notice, and we basically told them, "You've got 15 days to pay, or we're going to get a sheriff's warrant, garnish your wages, or attach your bank account." Forty-six percent of them paid. So it was, it was very disappointing. We also did, our garnishments are up 31 percent. We anticipate doubling that this coming year, 1,147 there. And also, we've started, as you know, down the bottom, we've started doing foreclosures. We got a contract in February. We sent our first batch in May. We've got the first group that are going to, they're actually to clerk court's office now. Of course, they haven't gone, gotten on the docket yet, I guess. And we sent, last week, we sent 102 more foreclosures to our foreclosure attorney. Some of our tax collection problems, bankruptcies, it's actually gone down. It's, we had 324 bankruptcies for approximately $290,000. And of course, we, that is included in our total. So if we could exclude them, our collection percentage would be up to 97.6 percent. Another good news is foreclosures, these are foreclosures filed, not the ones that are actually taken all the way through, were 1,134. That's a decrease from 1,337 in the previous year. Also, through June 30th, and actually, I got these numbers for Susan, so it came in handy, we've only had 515 through the first half of the year, so that shows it's going down again. Our vehicle taxes, again, although they're only 6.4 percent of our total levy, it makes up basically 22 percent of our delinquencies, or almost $700,000. A couple of other problems we had this year, as most of you know, we migrated to new software. The first time, we were using 1988 software. And during the migration period, we had two months where my employees, or the direct employees in the collector's office, had to go through double entry, and we had overtime. We also had no, did not have the ability to produce statements for garnishments. And once we got through, once we got out of the double entry, we had no online services for a period from December 9th until the middle of February. So consequently, we spent that, this was also during our busiest time, where we were basically taking payments. That's what you do in December and January. And because there was no online services, all the mortgage lenders, attorneys, bankers, whoever, were basically calling us, faxing us, emailing us, and that's what we did for two months. And also, after we got our first contract in for foreclosures, the foreclosure research took a lot of time, but now we do it on a daily basis. It's not so much a problem. On the last page here, it shows you our collection rate for the last nine years. This is something we're very proud of. As you can see, the, of course, it shows the fiscal year and the tax year, which of course will be the year before, and the original collection rate, and what our collection rate is now. Our average original collection rate was 96.79 percent, but at the end of nine, through nine years, and that's the taxes from 2010 all the way down to 2002, is 99.41 percent. If you'll see along there, it's getting a little tougher. The worst year that you'll see is fiscal year 2007, with 99.31 percent, and that's a year I had a $504,000 bankruptcy that Mr. Pope and I are still working on. That was in 2006. Our debts, debt set off. We're real proud of these numbers also. We've, I basically have one person working this, but for fiscal year, fiscal years 2002 through 2012, we ranked 20th in the state with $1,891,000 collected. That's out of 409 units. And we didn't participate in the first two years of that. For all years, we ranked 15th among counties, and in two, calendar year 2011, we ranked 11th with 422,000 in collections. I will tell you, I'd like to take credit for that, but actually, the EMS has started doing a lot of collections, and they have added tremendously to this total. They've collected more than we did this year. And of course, that, we appreciate them giving us those numbers. And that's all I have tonight, sir.
Your request is acceptance, our acceptance of this annual settlement?
Yes, sir.
In question order. Any questions, Mr. Furchess, before we proceed with the motion?
I'd like to know, what is a lien holder letter? Is that letters you send to?
Yes, sir. That's when we, if whoever you have your mortgage with, we send them a letter and tell them you haven't paid your taxes, and--
Does that mean the lien holder to pay it? I mean, is that generally what happens?
Well, we hope they will. All mortgage contracts have a section in there that gives the lien holder the right to pay your taxes for you and add it on to your, what you owe them. And of course, they protect themselves by that because our lien is superior to a mortgage lender.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Furchess, we appreciate your hard work.
Thanks, sir.
Please congratulate your staff on our behalf.
Thanks, sir.
We're very thankful. Okay, floor is open for a motion. Mr. Chairman, I move that we give the orders for the tax collector and sheriff to collect the taxes for the coming year, as required. Okay, acceptance of this settlement. Okay. Motion for granting of this request comes from Commissioner Mitchell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Item B is, or item B is a request for approval of a three-year uniform rental contract with Centos for the Solid Waste Department, and Dean Lael, our contracts manager, will make that presentation.
Good evening. For the last three years, Solid Waste has had a contract to rent uniforms from a company called Centos Uniform Rental. They've been extremely happy with the service and the uniforms that they provided. They'd like to have that contract renewed. Sitting before the, or sitting with the clerk, I believe there is the contract that'll renew that or update that for an additional three years. In that contract, there is no automatic extension language. There are no specialty items that have been embroidered, or any items that we should have to buy back at the end of the contract if we choose not to. Solid Waste would like to continue this contract, and with your approval and signature on it, they'll be able to continue for the next three years.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Lael? All right. If not, the floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve the contract.
We have a motion to approve this contract from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Item C is a request from our planning director, Joey Ruskowski, for appointment of a county commissioner to the MPO Memorandum of Understanding Subcommittee.
Good evening, commissioners. Last month, or actually, at your last meeting, I gave you an update on where we stand with our transition into the MPO, the Charlotte area MPO. And the very next night, we had our first subcommittee meeting of the MPO, which is a small subset of the current membership and the current elected officials. And what they have structured is this subcommittee to assist them with revising the memorandum of understanding, which is basically the guiding document that will, if you will, rule how MPO will operate once the transition takes place. And that small subset of the elected officials wanted to invite one Iredell County Commissioner as well as one municipal representative from the, each of the three municipalities that will be in the MPO, Mooresville, Troutman, and Statesville. And from what I understand, Mike Johnson appears to be, the mayor pro tempore of Statesville, appears to be that one municipal representative that the three municipalities are going to select. And now you have, before you request via me from the MPO to appoint an elected official from this board. The committee will initially meet, I believe it's every third Wednesday, and very quickly, there's one coming up next week. They will meet starting at 4:00. Initially, they've talked about meeting at the Charlotte Government Center. There was some discussion about possibly moving that meeting around the region. They will probably last anywhere from two to three hours, up to 7:00. And the initial commitment would be probably through, I would estimate, November, December timeframe. So you're probably looking at five to six meetings, because this has to be wrapped up by March 27th of next year. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
And your preference is one of us.
The MPO's preference is an elected official. I will be at these meetings as the staff representative.
Okay.
And I believe also Mike Johnson, of course, seems like the municipal representative, and I'm sure he will be at many of these meetings as well.
Have we got a volunteer? I'd miss the first two if we had it.
And certainly, too, if I could, Mr. Johnson, the MPO will be here your next meeting. Bob Cook will be giving you a presentation. This is an initial meeting that's coming up next Wednesday. I know it's short notice, so I'd certainly be willing to cover that meeting if you'd like me to, but in the future, moving forward, I think having an elected official would be beneficial.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
They appear to be heartfelt in wanting our participation as, you know, they draw their, their new document that will rule the new MPO, which we will be members of.
Mr. Chairman, I move we table this nomination till next meeting.
Okay. We have a motion to table this, and please call somebody, somebody, please somebody call me and volunteer. I don't want to have to appoint someone.
I'm not sure. I'm sorry.
Commissioner, Commissioner Moore, I'm the MPO representative, Alice Gunn. I was just telling your gentleman here that if your representative will drive to Mooresville, Mooresville will definitely pay for the gas to drive the, drive the carpool down to Sharp. But I just wanted to make it enticing to you. Thank you for your diligence.
And the company would be outstanding with you. Okay. We have, we have a motion to table this appointment to our next meeting. Mr. Oskinkowski, if you'd cover for us and email us if there's any significant decisions to be made, give us some direction.
Will do. Absolutely, will do. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
The next item, D, is a request for approval of an ambulance fee waiver. This is in the amount of $642. We had a few issues with this call, and we feel it's appropriate to waive the fee, and I would recommend in favor of that.
Floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we waive the ambulance fee from run number 12-78-451.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
E is a request for a decision regarding the submittal of the 2013 to 2014 legislative goals to the NCACC, and that is memo number six. And in addition to that memo, you have, there's a form, some information that's been provided by NCACC, and a form that we would use if you do have any goals that you'd like to submit to get that to the organization. And the deadline, I will mention, is Monday, September 17th, to get the goals back to them.
Okay, so we should have any recommendations as far as these goals to you by Monday, or by September?
Well, September 17th. So we've got some, we've got some time if you don't, if you don't want to do anything tonight.
All right.
Last year, we took it pretty serious, and I think our input was reflected by a lot of other commissions, so it's worth our time.
If nobody has any now, we'll, it will do. Can we put this on our agenda for later this month, and then--
Sure.
--afford us another opportunity to work on this? I would, I would make that motion at this point, that this, this item be placed on our August 21st meeting or agenda. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item F is a request for an amendment to the board's rules of procedure, and this is memo number seven, which includes a handout that Gene had submitted to you proposing some, some changes that basically would omit the topic exclusions from your rules of procedure when it comes to public comment. And basically, this is a, this is something that we've been informed by the school of government that is a practice that we should probably undertake at this point.
Any questions? Floor is open for a motion. Again, the request is for approval of revisions to our rules of procedure regarding public comment.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And the final administrative matter is a request for approval of the July 17th, 2012 minutes.
Floor is open for a motion if there are no amendments.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Robertson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have announcements of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. We have one announcement for the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, one announcement. We have no appointments of boards and commissions that I'm aware of, unless you've had a chance to review your reminder sheet. Mr. Chairman, we have one on Region F Aging Advisory Committee, two vacancies. Liz Burns is interested in serving. I move we appoint Liz Burns. Okay. We have a nomination of Mr. Liz Burns to the Region F Aging Advisory Committee. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I move we close the floor to nomination and appoint Ms. Burns by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Chairman Johnson--
Yes, ma'am.
--pertaining to that same committee, we do have an alternate position and a volunteer who has volunteered.
Okay. That's for the Region F?
Yes. Lou Greta Raven.
And that was on the update sheet.
Yeah, I was looking for that. Okay. What's your pleasure? Would you like to appoint an alternate?
I'll submit Lou Greta Raven's name as an alternate--
Okay.
--for that committee.
We have a nomination by Mr. Chairman, I mean, by Mr. Robertson to appoint this lady as the alternate. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. We have some unfinished business, and I believe Mr. Mike Smith is here with the Greater Statesville Development Corporation. He has a matter which deserves our attention. Good evening, Mr. Smith.
Good evening, Mr. Johnson. Thank you for having me tonight. I am here before you, to give you an update in terms of the board of directors' seat for the Charlotte Regional Partnership, which serves our entire community. As many of you know, the Charlotte Regional Partnership is an organization that helps market Iredell County, along with a 16-county region for new and expanding industries from across, across the globe. Statesville has actually never had a representative on this board, and recently, I spoke with my colleague in Mooresville, Robbie Carney, about this issue, and to see if we could work something out. I've also spoken with the Charlotte Regional Partnership president, Mr. Ronnie Bryant, and he has agreed to allow Iredell County to have two seats-- and he has agreed to allow Iredell County to have two seats for this fiscal year, so that the person that you all have, have requested to be, to serve for this fiscal year, and later this month, if the commissioners are in favor of this agreement, the city of Statesville will name an additional representative to our area, who will also serve for this fiscal year. So that works out well, as we see it, is that Iredell County will actually have two, two people representing the entire county for this next fiscal year. Next spring, Robbie Carney from Mooresville and I will meet, and we'll have a recommendation from Statesville, and put this before you all, as a mutual request, and hope that you will make that confirmation next spring, for the next board year. Our hope going forward is that we'll be able to have a Statesville representative for a two-year period, and then a Mooresville representative for a two-year period, and just alternate in that manner. As, one of the things that we've thought about is this two-year term gives the person serving on that board a good chance to, to get a good idea of what's going on, and be most effective for our county. Moving forward, this will remain a seat that is selected by the commissioners, as has been in the past, and with input from your Mooresville and Statesville Economic Development Directors. Thank you for your support, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions, Mrs. Smith? I want to thank you for clearing up what was really just an honest misunderstanding, and thank you for your effort and the effort of Mr. Carney in resolving this misunderstanding, we appreciate it.
Great, thank you for your support.
At this point, I would move that we accept Mr. Smith's recommendation, and going forward, that this would be our policy. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, we've got two alibis, if we can, on our reminder list for committee boards.
Okay.
Would you mind if I made those real quick?
Uh, no, sir.
For the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee?
Yeah.
That we appoint Janet Hall.
Okay.
She's a member of the committee, she just needs to be reappointed.
Okay. All right, we have Ms. Janet Hall nominated by Commissioner Robertson, any other nominations? Not all, in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, anything else, Mr.?
Also, the Local Emergency Planning Committee?
Okay.
That we appoint Reverend Ralph Lepley?
Okay.
As a faith appointee.
All right, are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I would move that we close the floor to nominations, appoint Reverend Ralph Lepley by acclamation, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Under new business, I would like to bring up one issue that's come to my attention on the mental health board. As you might be aware, my fellow board members, there was significant legislative change in the governance of mental health boards. And we were pretty much told to merge with the counties that we're now associated with, and the old crossroad board went away the last week of June this year. We're just now getting our feet under us, and just now learning how to manage, or at least begin to manage, this new entity when the legislature changed the rules in regard to the governance of mental health boards. And it's to be effective of July of next year. What I would respectfully ask, that you would view favorably a motion that I would make to ask our clerk to craft a letter, which I would sign, and we send it to the members of our legislative delegation, and ask them that they could postpone that change of governance for one year, to give us an opportunity to get through the reconciliation of budget amendments and so forth that we're going to have to do. We're going to spend pretty much the first half of the year feeling our way through a budget, and adopting some further policies and procedures, and that that change in governance be postponed for one year. So that's my request, and that's my motion, I'll entertain any questions.
You're talking about sending it to the current legislation, both going to change, and I, and I don't know that they're going to go back in session before next year.
Okay.
They may have a special session, but...
Let's, let's send it to them, and then we can send it to them again later, I'd just like for us to be on record doing that. Okay? All right, all in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Does anyone else have any new business?
Mr. Carr, show up.
Yeah, Mr. Carr ever show up? Under new business, I'd have a prepared statement that I would like to read at this time. To govern effectively, an elected official must be above reproach. Our decisions often, often impact very seriously the lives of those who have chosen us to serve. Our decisions, actions, and even our motivations should be held to scrutiny and always be preceded by self-examination. What I'm about to say may be difficult to hear, but please accept as truth that it's far more difficult to say. As a board, must hold accountable those who are under our employment, and require our management team to adhere to high ethical standards, they in turn demand the same from those that they employ, and at times are required to take disciplinary action for many matters, which do at times include the falsification of reports. Their authority has recently been severely compromised. As a board on a regular basis, we must hold people accountable for false information rendered to us. The moral authority for us to do this has also been seriously compromised. We must deal with the federal and state agencies and elected officials. We must deal with private sector entities ranging from bond rating agencies and prospective business clients desiring to locate in Iredell County. Among the consideration of bond agency ratings, bond rating agencies are the competence and integrity of the governing body. This reputation has been jeopardized as well. A board commissioners must be seen for what it is. It is an institution. It is an institution established by the wisdom of those who have come before us as to way, as to the way that we are governing ourselves at the county level. It is more important than any one person, indeed, it is far, a far greater, a far greater significance than the sum of us all. For these reasons, it is well that we are held to higher standards. These institutions, its reputation and effectiveness, effectiveness must never be compromised. Subsequently, it is with sadness, but with resolve, that I must publicly ask for the resignation of Commissioner Rene Griffith. It pains me to do this, the decision is hers, however, to maintain the credibility of this board and the community as chairman, I feel that I must publicly make that statement. Thank you very much. If there are any other comments to wish, wish to be made at this point, I will entertain those.
Are you looking for concurrence?
Well, I have, I do have a resolution that I have prepared, which, which states what I said in my statement, that I think we should adopt. If not, I would move that we adopt a resolution stating the justification for my statement, and the appropriate action that needs to be taken. And that's my motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries four one. Okay, county managers report.
I have nothing to report tonight.
We have removed the closed session from the agenda this morning, this evening, so at this point, I would offer a motion that we adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.